It's the only one we have.
Maybe the last one we ever had. Calling the work session to. Oh, my word. Okay, well. Let's get it. I'm cheating off the. Any additions? Yeah, roll call. Thank you. Wow, I've only done this.
Yeah, that's sexy.
Now it's so different, right? Yeah, we have Lori yet.
Yes.
All right, I think we call the role, please.
Yes, Broad.
Here.
Colazo. De Bowser.
Here.
Frick.
Here.
Lancaster.
Here.
Noel.
Here.
Sir Niso.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Seven present, one absent.
Any addition or deletion?
Um, I do have Mike from what, uh, Red and James coming. He should be here, um, by about six thirty twenty two thousand.
Six thirty. Okay. Remind me, forgive me, remind me, is that the, um?
That's for the action item under admin. So he should be there for time again to add that if not, then we should done.
Uh, any others addition or? That's just under admin, right? That's not taking a chain?
No, no, he's just here.
Okay, so not officially. Just for, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not a change. Are there any changes? No? Okay. Um, in which case then there's. No public behind that curtain, I don't think.
No.
Okay, which case then. On to the, uh, Michael Baker International Presentation whenever you guys are ready. Uh, Seth, are you on there? What's not like, well, something's not.
Are you okay with the lights?
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't want us to be too long a few visitation. If Jones is a level, yes, I am.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah.
Great.
So my name is Nick Dori. I'm a senior planner, Michael Baker. Uh, we're a Pittsburgh based hotel firm and we've been working here for the past year and a half on the zoning for this update. Finally done. This has been a long time coming and, um, you know, I want to recognize everyone here. I've talked to some of the one. I'll talk to specific concerns about the zoning ordinance, about what you want to see in here. And I want to thank Dr. Patrick here. Uh, who's representing our steering committee. We have a volunteer steering committee with other members, um, plus, plus borough staff and we're really grateful for the incentive to finance. We thank you, Dr. Patrick. So let's get started. This is a public hearing. Um, it is required by the state to adopt this own orders. We're gonna make it fun. Nothing is fun anymore. So, uh, it's gonna change my spots. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna first review why we actually want to write the zoning ordinance. Uh, we're gonna review some of the updated process and the things we did. Yes, we have talked to, and then we're gonna summarize the view for changes. This is about two hundred page documents, so we cannot do everything.
Two hundred and sixteen, if anyone is coming.
Thank you. So we're gonna do the big pieces and then anything really technical, Seth is our zoning and land use state. He's on the phone. Um, he'll be able to query it as I'm just kind of elaborating. I give you the technical answer. If we don't know the answer, any questions you ask, uh, we will get back to you and it will, you know, a lot of things will fall back. And then we'll just do the next. So, um, some objectives for the project, next slide. Um, we wanted to integrate some of your recent planning documents, including a comprehensive plan and master plan. Um, but then we've also heard that there's only one that is really difficult to use. We hear it's hard for small businesses to navigate. It's not a very transparent process. What is and what isn't allowed. Uh, then there's a lot of reviews by planning commission that there's an adjustment that maybe don't need to happen out of here is on the ordinance and the person. So those were our overarching objectives. We also wanted to make it conform to the, the vision of have development be the way you wanted it for the next ten years and you know, these zoning ordinance is known for decades, so we really want to. So what we did was we, um, picked off, we reviewed your zoning ordinance as it is now. We talked to people about the zoning ordinance. You, small businesses, stakeholders, government officials, borough officials. Um, we did community outreach to hear how people wanted zoning ordinance to read. And this wasn't just, hey, how do you feel about the useful zoning? I should person. This was, you know, more of a visioning. We had interactive exercises to really translate what kind of things people wanted to see. And we're finally at rewrite, have districts, have map, and we're doing this public hearing to follow you. We got to the option. Um, so here's a couple pictures of us on our field tour. This is all the documentation that we reviewed, so we weren't going to, we wanted this to be very responsive. Very accustomed to here on whatever conditions, so we will leave this up to us next slide. Um, we also went on a field tour, so you might see some folks here that are familiar. Um, we have a thirty eight town, including a few. We went all over the city to see what's working, what's not working, what you want to preserve, what you want to transform. Um, we went all different types of sites, including development sites like Forest Man School, uh, that are really top line for the borough next slide. And, uh, we even had Dr. Patrick give us some of the history and context, especially I can be with all the types of people. So I think, um, this is from our July open house. Um, so we had these character area maps where people could look posted notes and explain their vision for the borough. And then our job is to translate that into a technical. We had these people in house ideas. We had a lot of people, um, very successful event. So we did that. Next slide. We also tabled at the Northern Appalachian Hope Fest. This is our interior development picture. It's kind of not a costing, but not, not a costing. This guy just, I don't like them. And these were the big ideas that we heard. Um, people really like, you know, kind of the way it is. They wanted the neighborhood heritage to preserve. They wanted the R one area to be very common, just natural. Um, and they wanted to enhance that small town feel of things people will allow. At the same time, you know, we, I know we heard this from you in there. We want land use regulations that allow more flexibility to businesses to make easier for small businesses here, grow the businesses they have. While this is dependent to that, um, and then also deal with best practices for student housing. Students are here, they're a huge part of the borough economy. How do we get student housing and non student housing to be more than that? And then also the green light spot, their huge personal development plan, we want to contribute that. Um, so to do this, you know, we've done some polished towns and we're, for, and we reviewed several other polished towns that were similar size or similar in scale or also in Pennsylvania. Um, to see, you know, what, what are other towns doing? What's in Virginia? Next slide. Um, then here's some of our key findings about Indiana. So your zoning was started, it's officially two thousand and seven, but a lot of different parts are older. Um, there's email updates here in the air. There's emphasis of language. You call something one thing and then thirty pages later is another thing. And it's clearly just kind of pieced together like that down. Um, there's also really archaic uses, like we still have Doris. Backstory in there, which is really fun for us. Um, so we just recommended this to you when you were. Land use. So this was interesting. Some people, people like the way Indiana is, but you actually can't build Indiana in Indiana anymore because of your. These parcels here, the pink ones are blocks where you could not build what is there today. Based on your priority. MC is most under your four kind of farm residential areas. And then the pink ones are make new pit, but you'd have to go through a variance process and some risks to accomplish. Um, so we recommend just basically like legalizing the app. They did possible to build this here now that people like. Um, you know, we talked a lot about design standards. People really like it. It's cute. Come here. It is. Um, here's some examples of Dunkin' Donuts, uh, where, you know, maybe you don't want this kind of form, but you're okay with the Dunkin' Donuts. Here's Dunkin' Donuts, the same number of parking spaces just realigned to some design thing. So you can incorporate and did incorporate some. Um, for signage. So variances are required for lots of things that people enjoy, like, um, kind of whimsical signs, along sides. Um, small businesses without parking lots, um, not performing conventions on the bones too narrow. But if you look at this, this is Gettysburg. You think this is built cute. But in a lot of the borough, this is what you're allowed to build that, right? Um, this is a place that must have been, but, um, we've also worked here. And so this has, this checked out the box. It's signage compliant. There's lots of parking. There's landscaping, got that tree there. Um, so this is what your ordinance is saying is okay, but not that slide you just saw. So we made this changes. Um, what we really did was this was not a complete overhaul in the ordinance. What we really did is made it easier for Indiana to just be the same. Um, so we need overhaul the definitions to eliminate those archaic definitions and make the definitions that are in there easier for rural people, not developers, not lawyers. We also added definitions for emerging, so things like P P stations, hydrogen, so tena, telecommunications, facilities. Rideshare stations, things like that. Um, and then we adjusted the variance condition we use in by, right? First of all, a little table for that. So much easier to choose paragraphs and text. Um, we adjusted them to meet what people expected in small homes. We simplified them so they're easier. You don't have to go through each paragraph and text. And there's a lot of parallels between this fix that where they weren't. What do you mean by that? So like, for example, um, in some of your commercial districts, but you'll have the same, you might have had arbitrary different setback requirement and now it's the same.
Gotcha.
So you're like, oh, commercial business, any type of here. We also, this is a big change, actually. One of the biggest things that you could told us was that they really don't want to see historic buildings demolished to put parking. And your businesses do are required now to have few parking lots. Um, your minimum parking requirements require a lot of parking. It's tied to land use function, but it's pegged to all sorts of different things. So the restaurants, I think it's a couple of tables. More cooling alley, it's number of lanes or roll hall, it might be number of like suction areas. It's all different. It's all confusing. Um, and in a couple instances, it has resulted in the sort of while this, and so what we heard is the business is is this is need parking. They can figure out how much they need. The board is not in a good position to determine that for some.
Well, let me answer your question. Forgive me. I'm just kidding. But that role came from some.
What minimum working requirement?
Yeah. And like, so why did we think that was necessary to begin?
So there was that kind of a time and planning. We really thought we could get parking bigger. Yeah. And so, so everywhere I started kind of putting in minimum parking requirements, especially as far as became, this was like a sixties and seventies type thing. It's part of my show was really saying, um, municipalities just started putting in minimum parking requirements. And eventually it just kind of became a thing that everything did, the urban land, this is to be published, no ratios, like, oh, flower shop. And it just kind of became this traditionalized guard of zoning ordinances. And now what's happening is becomes administrative burden that actually is not much utility. And like little by little, municipalities are scaling them down.
Only one. Our other person is, so we're getting rid of the minimum parking requirement, but are we, maybe sort of there's like a maximum. So somebody doesn't just throw the parking lot.
So if you were to build a parking lot, that would be, yeah, and that would be controlled by. Yeah. So that wouldn't be committed in a residential.
Wait, but, but can they, but okay, so let's say a small store could abolish a building and say that if their parking lot additionally rent out parking spaces, or would that be followed with a little bit of this category?
So that's the, the parking is the primary use. So there's primary and accessory. The, the primary use of, but see you've got a restaurant. The primary use. Does it, it wouldn't matter necessarily if they had, it's not parking, but it's bigger. That often happens. The primary use is still.
It's, this is some of my opinion, not any situation, but say we have another church up in town with a lot of churches and a church rents a building, but there's no parking. How does our zoning and code say you're obviously going to need parking? And coerce or collect or seek them to get to the point that they need to have spots because they will probably have a couple hundred people, two hundred people there for church.
So what we've done instead of requiring parking is requiring applicants where their development is a certain size. Um, and so for the adjustment, it's all right. But, um, we require a parking. Right. So they have to have some sort of plan. Get still whatever. And the, the plan has to be.
So in that specific situation, if they didn't want to put in a parking lot, they would definitely process following. It's not like they're precluded from doing it. This is what, what you're doing is making it not mandatory.
Right.
So in theory, some people are like, oh, good. I put it apart. My thing good. I just saved a bunch of money. I don't have to buy that building, et cetera, versus a bigger facility. Still may end up doing.
Yeah. So I think if you have a big facility, you need some of parking there. If you are just rehabbing a building, like a restaurant, you will be okay. Uh, meaning you still will be parking, but it's up to you to kind of figure that out. Anything else on parking? Uh, I mean, the other thing is that you have a lot of public parking lots that are utilizing Indiana. So this provides an opportunity to utilize those and get one utility that. As part of your parking management plan, if you're in the business is, hey, I'm going to use some of those, but we're going to do parking shares, like for example, rather than, there's a, there's a, uh, office and restaurant. You just trade shifts, shows. That's viable.
Not, not to hang on this particular topic, but so if I was going to do, what's, what's called a burden demand study? Is that what it's called?
Yeah.
So if we're going to do a burden demand study, in theory, we could say, I want to open, we'll just pick my Ace Hardware, it just jumped to my head. If Ace Hardware wants to open up. It could part of their plan be something like, I'm going to rent out ten spots in the garden block. Does that count? Or is it have to be, you can't put it here because the surrounding roads would be too clustered.
No, we intentionally left it pretty open.
Okay, okay, that's good. So we could drive some travel, travel, right to, to those other parking areas. And that would check the box for the restaurant. They could say you can park for free. I'll burn. Lot, whatever.
Yeah, no, I was just gonna chime in on that point. Um, the following section after the, the parking demand plan is about shared parking agreements and shared parking allowances. So it feeds right into that. Um, it provides, you know, clear language about the ability to share parking with, um, even off-site locations. And so i- it simplifies the process and just tries to make it easier across the board.
So yeah, and we've also updated some of your design standards. Um, so it's kind of easier for you to approve that for you Dunkin' Donuts. It's harder to approve the, um, activities. So the thing we've done is, you know, for example, in mixed use areas like this, you want the door to be on facing the side. So now we made it that your primary entrance has to happen for that's. Just those sorts of little changes that are not that much rotated, but lead to a real nice experience. We also rerun your sign ordinance. Your sign ordinance was out of compliance. That regulations, which is like a deal, um, that's the content neutral. Um, what gave us, I think, the notes. So we also reduced period of large unnecessary size, let's say like student rentals. So we produced the signage. Um, it's some fewer. We've also revised the application process. And so, for instance, if someone wants to put up a sign, temporary sign, it was come in there. Whatever it is, we've made it very simple, uh, through flow charts, graph notes to absolutely understand the process in one. Rather than reading through block and text, it's even easier to just go through.
Real quick, Jesse, what's the point of you brought up the question on the student? Is it was, it was non attached, a different rule or some such?
I was gonna wait for the question answers, but I can bring it up now. The temporary signs are allowed to be larger than the permanent signs. So what appears to happen downtown is that everyone was up to temporary printing banners. Because as our love, they don't look as pretty. Um, but they're big enough. So when you made the sign smaller, do you make the temporary sign smaller or the permanent signs smaller?
Made the permanent size smaller.
Well, the permanent signs, I think, are too small to begin with. So I think that's where the problem lies. But you can't actually, you drive down the street and you see the permanent signs. Can't actually read them. Very far away. So, yeah, so that one. That'd be a problem.
Look up the temporary signage back in there.
We can, we can hold every question answers too. And I know you have a presentation you're doing.
No, no. No, and we did want to, you know, honestly, we did want to shrink the signage back in there, um, because you have these huge signs.
I do. I have a bunch.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll wait. So, oh, I, one, one question I thought might come up was what have you done with student housing? Um, you know, this was probably like the biggest thing that we're scared, what do you want to talk about? You know? So essentially we save functional every definition of that just the way it is. Um, student occupied rentals are restricted to other R one zone, which is, we're calling it now low density residential, but it's basically your R one. Um, and so those types of, as to student rentals or rentals that might be, you know, big kind of students are restricted out of R one that they're allowed in the kindness and control. And the mixed use area was supposed to. We also added, um, like I said, to be told for personal entrance and then parking pushed towards the back. Right. So, you know, the, the small parking, I'm putting off this stream of, um, out. And that's a pressure for that kinds of like zero law by setback. We're parking in the back. And then manstaging and operating requirements we added there so that, you know, an industrial or in a drive through, for example, is next to a residential area. You have to put in some. So here's your districts. These are the old districts, the new districts. There was really, we rename things, but there's not that much change. Um, we still have the gist of what you had. You had, you know, three different density levels for residential. You still have three different density levels for residential. Um, we had two businesses or two commercial, two commercial, public, public manufacturing turns to industrial. And that's actually, that's intentional. We're making it more permissible. You have kind of heavy industry businesses there and you're adding things like craftsman, um, small production, light production, things like that. That effort is to get less energy in the borough where it's part of the, it's a, so you need to be more. Yeah. So downtown core is basically a little bit of street and then very mixed use for as long as we're open. Um, there's going to be a mixed use kind of transitional area between campus and the low density residential. That is intended to keep the neighborhoods really quiet and campus. Uh, we, yeah. We also, you know, remember that map from earlier, everything could be built in Indiana. So today, we really, really shrunk that down. So now we have maybe ten percent not performing parcels, but we have seventy, twenty percent for, um, some parcels just not performing. That's fine. Um, and then we also zoned your historic buildings. So like a lot of churches that are no longer functional as churches, the Forest Man School. Um, we, we zone those to be the representative and the, is in the back to the. So like the Forest Man School to the median city residential area. Uh, so here's a current zoning now. So familiar. And here is the new zone. This is composed, this is still a common phase, so we'll move changes. Um, but you're going to see that it looks pretty similar to the old. You've got the campus, you've got a big downtown core in Philadelphia street. You've got your kind of neighborhood commercial of Philadelphia street. And then probably the biggest, but visible. This mixed use brand around Indianapolis and that's the Wayne Avenue. And so those are the kind of primary features for a lot of people going in that. And, um, they have like a lot of vehicular businesses and small apartment buildings. It is a true mixed use district as we can now. So really what we're doing is saying, that's fine. It's going to be a mixed use district, presidential, commercial, mixed use. But we do have some design standards. So that's not just in what the strip falls from. Um, residential, those low density spots in the, the work west and southeast, we use those there pretty much. Yeah, I mean, we can, we can kind of dwell on this because all of this.
I was told there's a question session. Try to be quiet over here.
And then we could just really quickly blaze through all the, so the low density residential is where you have your largest. Um, this is most of the area in pretty much correspondence here. It's like medium density residential, these little pockets and, um, you could have some, um, single family that also do like some town halls. It's your attachment. This was there now. Um, and that's kind of a transition there. Your high density is only a few places and as far as any corresponds to the. University is the university. Planetary public district is just a few civic buildings. Downtown four, so this be actually shrunk a little bit, um, kind of my size, the business district. And this is, there's no minimum dimensional apartments. You can build verified, um, various setbacks and, uh, it have a lot of. Neighborhood commercial are kind of on the slippery of that. And, um, your setback far is a little bit had to have a little bit more setback. Um, but we also, we've utilized. So, so low impact resale commercially since that fit into neighborhoods, it makes like the corner store, a long from that. Things that are really convenient can't really be built without building the CBA nowadays. Um, these are permissible and we give them. Your general commercials, it's really this kind of area up here that doesn't fit into any other zone. So we ended with general commercial. Um, it's kind of a modern one, but make this district in place. You do have the option to. Exciting. And then the mixed use stand up. What other one? Oh, yeah, you know, so, yeah, we did, um, and include things like light industrial, small manufacturing, neighbor space, uh, group hub. A lot of different things that are kind of like maybe more desirable. Um, so maybe. Um, what's the open space? It's all explanatory. And, um, so bring back, I'm almost out of on this, but, uh, so some goals in our plan, we added those districts and the zoning and that flexibility can allow for some of the projects, like the land projects, the virtual projects. The university, community connections, the church says we probably that's a plan. Really wrote this into the zone one, it's very intentional.
I suppose.
Nobody's denying questions. If you've run out of time, send your questions over to Nick and they will they could all be addressed.
I'll leave a stack of my cards too and.
The one more question unless somebody else has wondered. What defines a historic building? As you said, historic buildings are zoned differently. What defines an historic building? What if you don't want your building historic? What if you do want your building historic?
This is not the creation of a historic district.
Although we are creating a historic. It's a totally separate thing.
That's the the heart, but this is.
Okay, so just for the sake of clarity, you picked a few parcels and just used the word historic?
Yeah, historic.
I didn't know if it was like the definition. No, no, I got.
That will be for clarification, that will be the historic district or that guidelines for that or what sets that. What makes some historic will be included in Missouri ordinance. They left an open chapter for that, so that after we're finished with. Establish the harm. Figure out what all that legislation will be, if you just insert it right into this.
Obviously, in perfect state, we've got a low density area. That has more to it, it's still grandfathered in, right? So most of the things would be things that are already grandfathered in, you still get to do what they're doing.
Cause they are currently starting to rent spaces. Yes, they are. Yeah, horseman. Uh, I don't know what the. Is that changed when the fiscal district sells it or is it hard to as I can't do?
It's high guess, it's not hard to. It's it's the it's the orange.
Okay, yeah, I was wondering, like, it's gotta be something.
Yeah, it's it's.
It sounds like they're trying to utilize it right now. Maintenance contained, so I didn't know this this zoning change would affect them being able to think that. It would.
Yeah, it's the it's in the high density zone.
They wouldn't be able to necessarily do what they're doing now, which is rented out to.
I think it'll make it more flexible. Yeah, it was currently, it's R one, I believe, so yeah, this will make it more.
High density residential allows for commercial space.
Or is it law for like an apartment building?
People living, they're just renting it out, and I know it's like. I'm not sure how long it'll be able to do that. Yeah.
That may be a larger conversation.
And I think as we go through this transition of kind of leaving the old one behind, bringing the new one in, we're gonna run into. Things like this.
Cannot be mixed use. And I mean, since it's already spots on.
It's not a spot song.
Okay, well, it's high density residential, but nothing else.
Yeah, it's it's identity residential, but it but it can be a mixed use.
It can be in a high density residential.
No, 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 I mean, it could be zoned.
I mean, can if we're doing the zoning now, should we change the privacy style?
You're gonna change it now with the time.
Yeah, I feel like rather than make the change and like get people out to make come back later. So I don't think it's ever gonna become a school. It never becomes school, it may become apartments, it's more like they become renting out rooms. Yeah, it's.
It's nice to give options for such.
I feel like mixed use makes sense.
No, yeah, I think it would too, cause then you can always down, not necessarily downzone in terms of actually changing the zoning of it. But you can have anything less intensive than the mixed use, so if you were to have a, for whatever reason, wanted to tear it down, put a single family house. It was whether it's low, medium, high, or anything else, you'd be able to do that.
Helpful to know what's actually deep in it. Well, it's not the same as those two, uh, people are moving in there. And they've been trying to rent up. Which I think we want to have.
I think the idea was that it's in a residential neighborhood. And so saying high density residential to turn it converted into apartments or even condos or whatever. It would fit with the neighborhood because it's in a residential neighborhood. So putting it as as a mixed use island in residential neighborhood. Maybe problematic, like if somebody comes in and says, oh, this is. So if you bulldoze the building, put in a target or something, and but it's in a residential neighborhood. So the idea was high density residential.
Yeah, and I mean.
I I think.
Because they're gonna have parking, we wouldn't prove parking, so.
So you you may have a challenge if you turn that to mixed use, like the other mixed use areas in the middle of residence.
Can that, forgive me, I'm not familiar with horseman's parking lot. Could that even have, could that even handle? Like, can that building handle anything?
I I don't know.
Even turning into apartments for businesses, you're gonna flood the area with.
You could probably have enough parking for a high density residential, I don't know how many. Apartments that building proposed.
Some of the reason behind making that high density too was similar to. Down here, so thinking about the missing housing that we have in the borough, whether it's for young professionals, whether it's older folks housing. This provides that future opportunity, which is why I think this one, I said, it kind of sticks out. And the same as this one here, being high density surrounded by other things that aren't necessarily high density.
Yeah, yeah, I just counted the parking spaces of horseman or thirty two off street.
Yeah, so I don't know how there's thirty two. So how many apartments can you put in that?
Um, questions on different places where, let's say, a neighborhood commercial is right next to um, a low density residential. Like here on Cherry and Fourth Street. We've tried, we've drawn what looks to be like is already there, probably. But say they wanna grab one more lot and incorporate it into the neighborhood commercial. Is there any option within our zoning program to have like these little? Gray, it'll be a gray on here, but gray areas where they could. Seep out back and forth if necessary.
Between commercial and residential.
Well, right here on Cherry, um, not Cherry, um, it's School Street and Fourth Street, you can see this purple neighborhood commercial area. And it's kind of this funny little shape where you can tell that there's one more lot that could easily be brought into a low density residential, but it is. Probably because that's not what it is now. But say they wanna expand a little, or this lot feels like, well, I'm surrounded on two sides, I would might as well just. Let them add to their neighborhood commercial, but it doesn't seem like there's any availability for that in this map. Is there some gray area where, yes, if you're locked off either direction, you could switch over to the other zone, do we have something like that in our urban?
I it it's either in one zone or the other, but it but residential, commercial will allow for. Residential as well as some commercial use.
Neighborhood castle.
Neighborhood.
I would also think theoretically, you're on kind of an edge like this or this, if you were to combine lots. I think that would potentially solve that problem, I'm not sure about that, whether it would be. Because you're combining which zone would it be in, because there's two opposite zones, would be the one that initiated it or the one. So there's a lot of questions, I think theoretically, that's. An option that maybe. They're on the edge and they wanna be one or the other, but.
Yeah, you would you would do a consolidation in a rezoning.
Unless maybe this little sliver here is just gonna have something new in the neighborhood commercial, it isn't gonna attach itself. I'm just saying that this seems very, um, well, not black and white, but. Figured it'd maybe be black and white.
Which which is another thing that I want to call your attention to, as you run out of time. That the uh, you should consider the map as well, and and then send questions to Nick about the map as well. Now, I I'm at with the Borough Planning Commission, and Planning Commission has been working with this map for for months, trying to resolve. Conflicts, border conflicts like this, trying to make sure that we have something that's going to be workable. That but now it's it it's in in your backyard, and so you guys. Should look at at the ordinances, how they're written, and then direct comments. To Nick saying, okay, says your ordinance number, whatever, you know, this is our concern. And that is the same thing, that we have, you you have it zoned this way in this particular neighborhood, but I have a concern for X Y Z reason. Send that to Nick as well. Now eventually, everybody's concerned, both in in zoning and how the ordinance is written, and the map, where it's going to go. Everybody's concerned that will be taken into consideration, and then you'll be voting on the results of all of your.
Richard, do you wanna follow up with the the next timeline, when does the open public comment close?
That will close on the date of the adoption, which we're looking at at September second.
So in order to get along with the rest of the agenda, if it possibly change.
So it was pretty massive, the public input that I received, we got them into some, because no one received the letter. Whereas this one, we're just gonna pass it, no one knows. Because while we're having public hearings. So, um, what's going, what's happening for folks that are getting a change of them, are they getting letters?
And they do, they do.
When did those are those letters going on prior to?
I don't wanna say there is, like, I don't know.
So under, per the municipality's planning code of Pennsylvania, when you're doing kind of comprehensive rezoning like this, you are not required to send individual property notifications. So. You shouldn't, but we're not required.
But if you just change them once, for some people, we have.
Yeah, that's correct. Do a comprehensive zoning ordinance. There's something municipality's planning, and if you don't actually send individual letters. Yeah, if you are rezoning one property, you have to petition and notify all surrounding property.
Now, there wasn't public engagement component to this.
Right, I'm just saying, but when we did the next year's zone, there was standing remotely that. So, because everybody came out, because everyone there and everyone had something to say. But we're doing major changes, no one's serious, no one.
So we did do a lot of.
And I see in the pictures of people, and then I've been to many, it's the same people, veterans, yes, but sometimes you. Send a letter.
Well, let me, well, are you suggesting we do that?
I mean, we can change this, but I feel like we're gonna. We're gonna upset a lot of folks that are getting it changes and not being. Told in a way that. That people need to be told these days.
Make front heads lines, come on, do us.
So I said, I said, I'm gonna sign a prayer paper tomorrow with your.
They have to have a big fight about it right now, so he has to put it in.
There we go.
I mean, even to put it, she's, it's been out there, it's been communicated one. I mean, other than sending a letter to. Well, it's not everybody, it's not.
It's not everybody, I just. Dramatic difference. In the that process and this process, but this is there.
Okay, so again, do you wanna send a letter to everyone, is that a question?
So we have a little over three thousand parcels in the borough. So, three thousand, a little over two thousand, so in the big picture, if we wanted to get something, it would be over three thousand. I mean, what about, is everyone being changed, what about just for the parcels that are being affected? Have had a change in theirs own.
So because you have the districts. Everyone is being changed. But, for example, most people live in. R one, and that's low density residential, it's basically the same. But it is.
Right, but like, we didn't have mixed use over there. We only got them new here on that on the one side of the campus, and now we have at the other side. But they don't know it's happening.
We can, yes, maybe we'll do that in house, we'll think of something in house. Yeah, we'll work on that in house, I think that's something we can do, we can come up with a little postcard mailing, send it out. Well, like, send out a ball.
It it should. It should direct them to your website that has the changes, so the changes, there is a public process here that the cooks, consultants have followed through. And you have this out on your website.
Oh, I don't think she's saying you did something wrong.
No, no, no.
You were saying a little extra mile, maybe.
No, I agree. I agree, but I I'm just saying that that you should all know that it's already public. And that it should direct people to where that you get all the information that you guys have.
Maybe that's what we'll do, just a postcard directing them, please, you know, you've got.
Say, I do think we're gonna be interested in this, that I'm currently aware of it.
If I might ask a question, will there be, is the text available online?
Yes, yes, both the map and the draft.
Okay, so, yes, we will send something out, let's take a moment. All right, any. Or help you know the question, cool, okay.
Thank you.
We really want you to love your zoning ordinance.
Okay. Uh, moving on then, rapidly. Many reports. Hammond has a action item, so has been.
He's here to ask, well, Mike's here to ask some questions, and we wanna make the motion. Or we're ready to make this motion, and then we can call questions, especially if there's somebody a question to talk about it.
Okay, so go into the act action item, then discuss, right, okay. All right, Peter.
We want to. Is that a motion? Applicable right now?
Yes.
We all know it, I think. We all should have been at the committee meeting. Moved, we moved to approve ordinance two oh two five oh seven, perimeter debt. Outlining the financing of the solar project at the waste water treatment plant by the rural water financing.
Now, this doesn't say from community, didn't this come through community? So does not technically need a second, but it's there's not say it, it's a second. Okay, which case then, any discussion? On the motion, which is what this gentleman is here to talk about, if we need.
Yes, we updated. We wanna talk about that.
Yeah, we can.
So while that goes around, again, I'm Mike Fekagan with Raymond James, I was in front of you, uh. Three weeks ago. Obviously here to answer any questions, but there's a couple of things that we talked about last week that I do wanna stress. We talked about the idea that the ordinance says that. There's a not to exceed amount that you're gonna be borrowing, that's more than you're actually gonna be borrowing. And that actually came into play, because E I S called me last week and said that they had the ability to. Uh, and I'm gonna. Summarize this as best I can, or I'll summarize this, and if you wanna go and do it more depth, but basically. They had the ability to purchase domestic content for some of the panels and fittings and all that type of thing. Which is more expensive. But it allows you to get one of the tax credits. So the net effect of all that saved the borough about sixty thousand dollars. The difference, though, is from my perspective, is that the borrowing amount went up by about. A hundred and hundred and forty thousand dollars, so that's why, that's a good example as to why I needed. The the flexibility to be able to. Move principal around and do all the things I needed to do, um, to. To make this happen, so what you'll see, the biggest differences are, you'll see the borrowing amount go up by about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. But you'll see it offsetting credit from the, um. The investment tax credit, E I T. Yeah, under domestic content bonus, which you weren't getting back for. So the net wash of that is a net positive to sixty five thousand dollars to the borough.
Okay, so it's sixty five, about the one forty.
Right, so you're gonna borrow a hundred and forty five thousand, you're getting more back from when.
We had two hundred and five thousand one credit.
Yes, exactly right. So, other than that, that's really the only difference, we ended up having to put in the newspaper, which all of you probably saw. Was one point nine million dollars that, uh, the not to exceed number. But if you look at the top right, it's significantly lower, it's about a hundred and, um. The wonder, one million, one fifty, I think. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that was a project, yeah, the million, uh. Million one thirty eight, then plus the cost of issuance. And so. The rates will be locked on September ninth, if you, um. Find in favor of a vote in affirmative for this ordinance. And then we will close on the on the issue on September thirtieth, which basically means you'll get a wire. Project amount.
So these domestic items are manufactured in the United States and sample.
They're, they need to.
To meet the tax credit.
They need the requirement of domestic content. From the IRS tax code, so, but basically, they are manufactured in the United States.
For the part.
Well, Jonathan, you. I mean, because he's not from the solar.
It's like, it's some of the, like, the panels, it's like forty percent and stuff for some instances, and then. Different percentages for different components.
As long as.
How do you say with transparency, if we're saying domestic items are being used?
Yeah, as defined by the federal government, they are, they are domestically produced.
To meet, yeah, to meet your requirements, to obtain the the tax credit. Yes.
Made it America.
Any more discussion or impressions?
Well, I'd probably do a roll call, yeah. Yeah, anyway, dude. Uh, Lori, you with us?
I am.
All right, if you don't see any further discussion on that, if you could do a roll call vote, please.
Yes, Bro- Broad.
Yes.
Colazo. De Bowser.
I answered, there's any more discussion, nobody sent their, we started a vote, if there's more discussion, we should have it.
All right, I think you need to start. All your roll call again, sorry.
Okay.
No problem. I'll start from the beginning, Broad.
Lori, one second, Lori, sorry, I got a little confusion here.
Yeah, so the question was, will all the dollars be accounted for? And the answer transparently, and and so the answer is yes, there'll be a closing, there'll be a settlement sheet. Um, and closing. That will be, as I said, that'll be.
Only for reference, if we're approached or asked.
No, it'll be down to the penny, it'll be here at at the borough's office, you know, your auditors will always have that. Always will ask about it.
And also, when we are buying things, you know, like we did with the construction project. There are pay orders that will come in, and we will vote to approve what we're buying and when we're buying. And then that money will be drawn out of the account to pay those bills.
Yeah, yeah, so the the first part of that was just the costs and everything associated with. Project fund will come into the borough, and then you track that. Yeah, as you pay pay bills.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, Lori, would you please apologize, would you please stuck the roll call vote over?
No problem, Broad.
Yes.
Colazo. Bowser.
Yes.
Brick. Lancaster.
Yes.
Noel. Sir Niso. Smith.
Yes.
Six yes, one no, one absent.
There's nobody absent.
I asked for Tamara Colazo.
She said yes.
Oh, I didn't hear her, did she come in?
She walked in after you got all of the.
Okay, thank you.
She better jazz.
Okay, thank you, that's seven yes, one no.
Um, motion carries.
All right.
You don't have any.
I bet that we have anything else, if anybody is about to meet if we ever get rid of, or we just made.
All right, in which case, nothing for community development, we'll talk about the council meeting. Public safety has an action item and whatever else done, want to, you weren't there, were you, so I guess, well, you can still do the action if you want. But you weren't there, though, do you wanna do it? Okay, in which case, from public safety, we'll keep this in here. Any report to the. Uh, suggested motion, which doesn't say it is a second, and it came from, so I don't think it needs one. Is there any further, I guess I gotta read the motion first, we'll go approve the application for the Eighth Street Design Charette on Friday, September twenty sixth. Twenty twenty five on Eighth Street, between school and Philadelphia streets. And in the Eighth Street parking lot from four to seven E M. Not for, this, this is.
One with the application, and I don't think that they'll be pursuing it, but there was one on the application.
Well, real quick, isn't this just because you guys wanna do a tour, is that what this part is?
It'll be for this impactful urbanism component, so as a, if they have pay bills, or if they have phones out in the street to show what a closed parking lot would be, or. Something along those lines.
Right, so did this part have any open waiver requests?
There is part of the charette that is intended to be a market space, so if a restaurant would want to be in that market space and would have. That it's just to cover. That at this year, I mean, I think we'll be trading signs right now, but I don't hope they'll be pursuing anyone with a liquor license.
Right, okay, so we. Well, it's not on the motions, I mean, they're gonna, we're not approving with that. Now, what she has to.
Anyone about to change the word charette to something that people know what that means? My feedback is, what is a charette, why are they calling it that? Something, something that is a word that people, if you want people to be engaged, don't make them confused. Yeah, it's like, are they, is it a?
So are we amending the motions?
Okay, uh, any, we're all voting, yay or nay? All right, everybody, uh, approve the motion, so yay. Anyone opposed, nay? The charette is happening, and I will explain to you what a charette is.
All right, um, anything else? Well, which case, uh, anything from public works? Okay, division reports, anything from planning?
Um, I'll bring it up.
Okay, um, well, I don't think shade dream means the next one, one day, so. All right, which case, personnel reports. Nicole, who's a.
Figure out these targets now, um, I'm good.
Okay, in which case, L T in place of chief. All right, uh, Mr. Suster. Okay, moving on, Diane Pearson is not here, nor did I see anything in the email. Uh, I don't have anything to say, anything more than I always do, so which case, Mr. Mayor. Do you have anything?
You have lots of time, no, yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay, uh, rank, any whole business? Okay, uh, rank, any old business? Okay, any new business? All right, we have a motion to adjourn the work session.